All right, it's 5:30. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, October 23rd here in the boardroom. We can start with the roll call, please, Tammy.
Paul Prue.
Here.
John Smith.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Cumps Ashbeck.
Here.
Amber Dorizzo.
Here.
Jacqueline Remmler.
Here.
Mike Hornisher.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Kevin Flink.
Here.
Please rise if you're able, facing the flag, and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct should be expected by all entities.
Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda or the first thing is the opportunity for public comments to the Board. I did not have any sheets turned in to me. Tammy? Shannon, no? So then we'd like to move right into recognition tonight. The Board would like to start by recognizing Kalen Allen, a junior at Merrill High School. Received a Bex Player with Heart recognition. She was nominated due to her commitment to FFA and agriculture as well as her involvement in girls wrestling, mature team, and Brooks School of Dance. Kalen serves as an excellent role model to younger students interested in agriculture as well as welcoming new students into the FFA. Bex recognizes student athletes who have a passion for agriculture. Only 20 students are chosen in a year and are eligible for a $1,000 scholarship. They recognize students in Wisconsin, Iowa, Indiana, Minnesota, Ohio, and North Dakota. Congratulations to Kalen on this achievement. In fact, she is at FFA this evening, so I will turn this over to Mrs. Dieter to get to her. But congratulations to Kalen. Round of applause for Kalen. Thank you, Tricia. Quite the busy gals. Speaking of busy gals, next we'd like to recognize the Prairie River Middle School Counseling Team, a group of Trina Kanaspe, Laura Clavits Forrester, and Jessica Frick. They made adjustments to 500 schedules after the school year started. It's quite a daunting task, and they rose to the challenge, so thank you and congratulations. I'd like to recognize them. Center on the blue jay, so our mouths don't look their way here. Smile of this, Tammy. Thank you very much.
Ron?
Go ahead, Ron.
I just noticed that it's National Principals Month, and I think we have an excellent group of principals, so I'd just personally like to say thank you for them, and I appreciate all their work. Thanks.
Next on our agenda, we're going to hear what our Student Board of Education representatives, Max Black and Mark Wagner, have to say about activities from the high school.
Yeah, there's been some exciting sports events recently. The football Jays had a great win against Ryan Lander, and they're in their way to the playoffs against Onalaska, so hopefully they'll be able to pull through there. But football isn't the only sport doing well. Volleyball swept their regional match against Ryan Lander last night, so they'll be playing more. And soccer also had a regional match last night against Mozeni, but they fell short 2-4. Their goalie did have an unfortunate injury, so that was too bad. They don't have a backup goalie, so rough position, but they still look great, they look great. And as you heard, the officers of FFA traveled to Indianapolis today to attend their national convention, where they'll learn leadership skills to help in their personal growth and growth of our chapter here at Merrill. Famous country artist Megan Veronie is going to be performing at the convention, so that's kind of cool. And then looking to the future, staff and NHS members are going to be preparing for the bedrooms assembly. That'll be scheduled for Monday, November 11. And the end of first quarter is also coming up on November 4, where students need to have all their work turned in and the grades will be finalized.
The Merrill marching jays had an amazing season with their show Echoes of Darkness, placing in the top three at every competition. They got second place at Cumberland with best color guard, third place at Franklin, second place at Greenell with best percussion, and they didn't compete at Milton due to weather. At the state competition in Whitewater on September 19th, they got third place out of the eight bands in their division with a score of 79.038, and were less than a point away from best percussion. They placed 11th overall out of the 29 bands attending. And I want to give a huge shout out to Ms. Ellie Wilk for making everything possible this season. She keeps everything running from rehearsals to the football concession, putting her whole heart into our marching band. She is an amazing director that cares about her students, and we all look up to her. The Calgary Lutheran Church holds a luminary fest every year with activities and food and a pumpkin trail in the woods. The FFA Junior Optimists and Razor Voice Clubs from Merrill helped out by getting together and carving pumpkins. Every year, the church chooses a charity or a nonprofit to give back to, and this year they chose our Razor Voice Club. The club has a table with information and little things to give out, and members sat and talked to people about our club's goals. Last week, the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors received their pre-ACT scores. They learned how they did in math, science, English, and reading. They can see how many questions they got wrong and where. It also tells them what they are predicted to get on the real ACT and how they compare to other students in the country.
All right, thank you, Max. Parker, board members, any questions on their updates? A lot of information there going on.
Well done.
Yep, definitely well done today. Cross-country perhaps sectionals this weekend also, Friday, it sounds right? I think that's coming up. They were recently, I think they do, cross-country does conference and regionals at the same time, I believe. So that's a bit unique, so there will be some running, maybe even Friday before the football games. Good luck to everyone still in the playoffs, and best of luck at all the activities that continue at the school and throughout the district. So thank you, guys, for your reports. Next on the agenda, we're going to work right into administrative reports. As you see, there's quite a few of them. Before I turn them over to Mr. Murray for going through those, board members, if they have any questions, they sometimes do bring those up in advance. Otherwise, you have the opportunities to ask this evening here as we're in open session. I'll turn it over to Mr. Murray for administrative reports.
First report up tonight is Agenda Item A, summer school report, prepared by Eli Libby Grant, out of the board committee team. He has here questions that were shared last week, a few weeks ago. Heather Silber has her annual exit survey data with you from 2324. There's some information in there. That was also shared at the community level a short time ago. If anybody has any questions, Heather is here. Next item is the High River School for Young Learners Monthly Report, has their update data, their enrollment numbers, some information about meals for students, and some other health care programs. Ryan is here, he has any questions. Food Services and Ops Report, Item D, Board Bites and Participation Report, Columbus, September, that's provided by Larry Crowsey. Item E is Third Friday Enrollment Information, and there's a topic summary sheet attached from Hannah Paluska, who is here this evening. That was shared at CTP, to be explained as well. Item M, Director of People's Services, Special Education. Amber is here this evening to answer any questions that we have, and her report is about special procedural compliance. Item G is the Director of Coaching and Instruction Report. Amanda is here this evening. Her report focuses on the work that she is leading in the area of Act 20, if there are any questions. Item H, Director of Finance. Mark is here this evening to answer any questions that you may have. He's got some updates on short-term borrowing, the monthly budget review that he puts in, provides key information on monthly, and as well as some department updates. If you have any questions for Mark, he gets here. Item I, Director of Human Resources, that comes from Heather Silber. A lot of different things in her report this evening, so if you have any questions after reviewing that report, she's here to answer those. Item J, Director of Buildings and Grounds Transportation Update, that's from Nick Wazalik. Who is here this evening answering questions? Some updates about Jefferson School, so which we'll be addressing later, some fall maintenance projects, transportation updates, et cetera, et cetera. And then K, finally, is my report, some brief management report, information there about PFAS, updates on High River, where we begin some boring and well-drilling and testing as soon as we get some things finalized with the VNR. I'll mention some progress on strategic planning. I'll be coming to the Board and remember with a formal proposal on that. And then the busing RFP process, Mark and Nick will be available in our position to get some final information on some numbers, so those RFPs are going to be available, so if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda is the committee reports. Start with the Finance Human Resources Committee, attached, the board member viewing was the draft minutes from our October 9th committee meeting. John Smith is chair, and other members of Finance HR Committee are available for board member questions. Do any board members have questions for our Finance Human Resources Committee this Any questions for Finance HR? Otherwise, we're going to move on to CTP, Curriculum, Technology, and People's Services Committee, also met on October 9th. Draft minutes were attached there as well. Anna Burtia is chair, and other members of CTP Committee are available for questions from board members. Board members have any clarifying questions for our CTP Committee members? Hearing none, we're going to move right on to unfinished business. Tabled last meeting was substitute teachers and support staff incentive proposals. There is a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Is anyone willing to make the motion on this agenda item or topic? Paul?
I move to approve the teacher and aid substitute incentive program, which includes a $500 stipend for completing 50 full days of substitute work and a $1,500 stipend for completing 100 full days of substitute work.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ron. Well, we have a motion. Any discussion or questions on this topic or agenda item or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Honor of voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the Board of Education, in the Board of Education business category, is the adoption of the 2024-2025 Budget Levy Certification. Information from Mark Paul has been provided. There is a normally recommended motion here. I want to present this first, normally motion first. Are we looking for anyone willing to make the recommended motion here? Paul?
Move to approve the 2024-2025 budget as presented, and set the levy in the amount of $9,115,386 for Fund 10 and $478,500 for Fund 80. Total amount of $9,593,886.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mike. Now we'll have some information, discussion, and questions. Mark, do you have some highlights you'd like to start with?
Sure. Thank you. Provided a couple of attachments in the topic summary sheet. The first one is more of a detail that the Board adopts on a kind of a programmatic basis with the budget and the tax levies. You can see, we'll get it up here, the levy is going down about 2.24%. And then the other one is more, is less detailed, but it's the one that's published in the paper. It's 2.24% reduction from last year. The aid was certified on October 15th, which drives the final approval of the budget. We do, and it's also based on Third Friday count, and as my notes say, we did have a kind of a big swing. It was what was originally projected on the Third Friday count and the open enrollment. So we were needed to, the budget is balanced, but we needed to look at different areas to make some reductions going forward. So we did adjust some departmental budgets and some other areas. We did have to balance the budget. We did pick up a couple hundred thousand dollars on the revenue limit at one time, open enrollment adjustment from the prior year, so that helped lessen the reduction that was needed. And as I indicated on my email or my note, that if we, once Jefferson's finalized and we get the additional costs, we'll have a discussion further administratively in the Board about, maybe reinstate some of those reductions. But I just wanted to give the Board a heads up on, that's kind of what we were dealing with the last week or two on that. The other piece of information I provided was a five, six-year summary of the tax levy history that also includes the percent increase and decrease of the levy, but also the EAV, which is the equalized value. You can see that it's gone up double digits, double digits the last couple of years, which helps spread out the impact of the tax levy as you go forward. So the levy rate last year was 5.83, and this year is 5.17. It's kind of an artificial number because we don't give rates to the municipalities. We give them a dollar amount, they do what they will at that point, so. But we were bucked, I know, about $250,000 plus than last year, as far as I look, as far as they levy. Entertaining questions? You want to? John's good news?
Was there highlights to, like, when you said the areas that were cut back on the budgets, like, areas were targeted?
Yeah, maintenance was one of, at this point. We just watched projects and obviously had them prepared and things like that. That's the main area.
One of the challenges we had is, was that, well, 79% of our elected incentive staff were committed to that at this point, so we have to lose departmental classes as well as we're going to.
Additional questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Anything else you want to add on that, Shannon, before a vote?
No, I appreciate Mark sharpening his pencils.
Yes, indeed. Are we hearing no additional questions? Let's put that to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the Head Start Annual Report. The topic summary sheet was provided by Ryan Martinovich. It's a reminder for us to review the annual report from 2023-2024, and there's a recommended motion, if anyone is willing to make a motion. Nubs?
I move to approve the Head Start Annual Report for 2023-2024.
Motion by Nubs. Do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this agenda item? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Head Start Training for the Board of Education. Being that the Board of Education is the governing body of the Head Start program, each of our members must receive their training. This was all provided, and at the end of that, there is a sheet to fill out and to provide back to Tammy Waller. Just a reminder of that. Anyone have any questions on that training presentation or that government's training agreement that we're signing based on going through that information? Otherwise, we will move along to our next item, which is the updated ERSI, or Enrollment Point System. That topic summary sheet was provided by Ryan Martinovich as well. There is a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion? Ron?
Motion to approve the new 2024-2025 MAPS Head Start Point Sheet to include a 30% housing adjustment.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion on this motion or agenda item? Any questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the 2024 MacBook and iPad Buyback and Employee Purchasing Option. Topic summary sheet was provided by Andrew Kahler. There is a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Paul?
I move to approve the sale of 2020 MacBook Airs as proposed by two MAPS staff for the remaining Macs and sixth-generation iPads being sold to Diamond Assets Buyback Company.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Amber. Any discussion or questions on this motion or this topic? Any discussion, questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Amplify Boost Purchase, the topic summary sheet provided by Amanda Patterson. There is a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Jacqueline?
I recommend a motion to approve the $15,500 purchase order for Amplify's Boost Resource with curriculum and instruction.
Motion by Jacqueline. Do we have a second? Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or agenda item? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Support Staff and Administrator Compensation Plan Language Revision, attached to the topic summary sheet from Heather Silber, and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion in regards to this agenda item? John?
A motion to amend the Support Staff and Administrator Compensation Plans to state that employees recommended to start the next school year on a plan of improvement will not be eligible for pay rates or advancement.
A motion by John. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or this agenda item? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Limited Term Student/Teacher Contract Template, topic summary sheet provided by Heather Silber. A recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Ron?
I make a motion to approve the use of limited terms student/teacher contract template for specific hiring needs.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion on this agenda item? Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion on this agenda item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Fleet Vehicle Lease, attached to the topic summary sheet from Nick Wazalik, and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item or topic? Nubs?
I move to approve the replacing to lease for fusion to Chrysler Pacific Avance for lease terms provided by Bergner's Park City in Merrill.
A motion by Nubs. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion on this agenda item? Any discussion or questions on this motion or agenda item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Develop Internal Talent, Future Finance Director, a topic summary sheet was provided by Shannon Murray. A recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the creation of a draft contract for the development plan for internal staff member to pursue the position of Finance Director at MAPS, which includes providing up to $25,000 in tuition, tuition reimbursement, and internship overshadowing opportunities for the current Finance Director. In return, the successful candidate agrees to a three-year commitment to remain with the district upon completion of the school business management and graduate program.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ron. Before I turn it over to questions or discussion, you want to just highlight that a little? You did a nice job talking about that, you and Mark talking about that, Finance HR.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, this subject, like, many of these in this section have been discussed pretty extensively at the community level, but if you click on the topic summary sheet, one of the things that came out of HR Finance, we had presented a professional development plan that outlined the program for both the school side and the potential candidate side. The HR Finance Committee felt that stronger contractual language was in order, and asked that be explored with our legal council board in the court, so I sent them down there. And you can see, their recommendation is highlighted in blue there, which is a tuition reimbursement agreement. Their recommendation is to use that tuition reimbursement agreement and have that focused strictly on the financial side of it, and keep the professional development plan as a separate document that outlines attending multiple things, shadowing with Mark, all those kind of things, because it's the financial side of it. And the one change that they
And the one change that they recommended, as I shared, is that we talked about the liquidated damages side, at HR Finance Committee, about, if you were with the penalty of a person who are believed, they are recommending a prorated, over the three-year period, liquidated damages amount, I believe it starts at 100%, goes to 66, and then 43%, because they don't take 100% of the whole in the court after any time.
All right, with that additional summary, thank you, Shannon. Turn it over to any discussion or questions in regards to this motion on this agenda Any discussion or questions on this motion? All right, we'll take you to a vote. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Before I ask if anyone is willing to make a motion on the consent agenda, I'll ask if anyone would like anything pulled from the consent agenda to be dealt with individually this evening? Not seeing any hands up, I would look for a hand to be up to do the motion for consent agenda. Ron?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D, which include receipt of the September 16, 2024, annual meeting and budget hearing minutes. So the September 18, 2024 meeting, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling $4 million, Donations totaling $9,207.46. Any attached personnel report, contingent upon release of contract for hiring, and upon the satisfaction of appropriate liquidated damages for resignations if applicable.
You have a motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Mike. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Our attendance has been good, so should be no abstentions, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Items for Future Meetings. This is an opportunity for board members to mention anything they want added to the list of, the running list of future items to be reviewed either at a whole board level or taken to the committees. Certainly, we have a couple items on there now, we try to handle those swiftly as they come in and go right to committee with them. Any board members have anything they would like to see added? Or anything, perhaps a refresher as to where they will be coming up, if you don't see it on the list? Right now, we're, we have two things on there that we're working on, one of which we'll be working on yet this evening, is Future at Jefferson School, and the other is Mr. Murray has talked about, and others in committees, is strategic planning and how to review what we currently have and continue to extend that forward. Any items for future meetings that board members would like to highlight or mention right now? Otherwise, we would move forward, and keep in mind you can talk to Shannon or myself or any of the committee chairs, if you'd like those added to upcoming committee agendas as well. Tomorrow morning, our regular Thursday radio program. Tomorrow, Shannon and I will be highlighting tonight's board meeting. It's at about 8:15 in the morning, so look forward to that. Future meetings include, but are limited to, the Facilities Committee, next meets on Wednesday, November 13th at 3:30 here in the boardroom. Curriculum Technology People's Services, or CTP, meets on that same evening, Wednesday, November 13th, at 4:30 in the boardroom, followed by our Finance Human Resources Committee that same evening, Wednesday, November 13th, no sooner than 5:00 PM in the boardroom. Our regular board meeting for November is Wednesday, November 20th, 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. Next, we have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under Section 19.85, Part N1, Part N2, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of a public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Need of liberating or negotiation of the purchase of public property, is investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Part N3, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation that charges against specific persons except for, Part N4 applies, which is discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations in 118.125, for the purpose of considering student early college credit and Start Now applications that may involve discussions, confidential student records, and to discuss other matters involving student records and personal histories that are discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of the persons discussed. Purpose of closed session is for consideration of impossible action regarding applications for participation in the early college credit and Start College Now programs, to discuss the superintendent's regularly scheduled formative evaluation, which consider and discuss bids for the sale of Jefferson School, and take possible action in open session to follow. Anyone willing to make that motion this evening? John? Do we have a second? Paul? Do we have a roll call on that, please? Tammy?
Paul Crew?
Aye.
John Smith?
Aye.
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Nubs Ashbeck?
Aye.
Amber DeRizzo?
Aye.
Jacqueline Gremler?
Aye.
Mike Hornisher?
Aye.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Kevin Blake?
Aye.
All right. This time, we will adjourn to open session, wait for the people that we need for that. 7:26 PM, Board of Education is reconvening in open session. We have a couple of topics to go through, and I will look to see if we have a motion on the early college credit and Start College Now application topic. Ron?
Make a motion to approve the four early college credit courses and the 14 Start College Now courses, as presented in closed session.
You have a motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, let's go through a roll call vote.
Paul Crew?
Aye.
John Smith?
Aye.
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Nubs Ashbeck?
Aye.
Amber DeRizzo?
Aye.
Jacqueline Gremler?
Aye.
Mike Hornisher?
Aye.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Kevin Blake?
Aye.
Next topic, coming out of closed session, that's appropriate to come back for open session, would be the matter of the sale of Jefferson Elementary Schools. Anyone willing to make a motion on that? Mike?
I make the motion to accept the offer to purchase for Jefferson Elementary School property that was received from Highland Community Church on October 21st, 2024, for the sum of $750,000. The next closest bid was $550,000.
We have a motion by Mike, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Ron. I would like to add, before bringing to a vote, I'd like to thank everyone who expressed interest in the purchase of the property, picked up bid packets, submitted offers to purchase, did their due diligence, and was part of the process for the Jefferson Elementary School property sale. So thanks to everyone doing that. Thanks to you and Nick, and everyone who put information together on that. That being said, I would ask for a roll call vote on that motion as well, please standing.
Paul Crew?
Aye.
John Smith?
Aye.
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Nubs Ashbeck?
Aye.
Amber DeRizzo?
Aye.
Jacqueline Gremler?
Aye.
Mike Hornisher?
Aye.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Kevin Blake?
Aye.
Motion carries. That ends our agenda for this evening at 7:29 PM. Anyone willing to make a motion to adjourn?
Welcome to adjourn.
Motion by John Smith, second by Nubs Ashbeck. All those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance.